Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. My colleagues on council, city staff, invited guests, and all in attendance. I want to welcome you to the public work session today, July 9, 2024. I will now ask my colleagues to note their attendance electronically.
Six members of the city council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we will move on to the agenda, and I will turn the floor over to our city manager. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, council, citizens, my colleagues on the dais. Have a couple of items for you this afternoon. We're going to lead off with the PRHA presentation by Ms. Winston, followed by Chief Jenkins. He's going to come and speak to us on the Portsmouth United. We had a presentation last time about Cities United, and this is kind of Portsmouth's version of that, so we want to make sure that you guys are aware of where we are with that project as we move that forward. But first, Ms. Winston is going to provide us some information, share some information with us from PRHA. Ms. Winston, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager. Thank you for allowing us to be here today to present our resident services and programs that we have at the authority. With me, again, I'm Alisa Winston, Executive Director for Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and Ms. Brittany Farneson is our Resident Services Manager for the authority. So, we have got questions, and maybe you have too, regarding what do PRHA do for their residents. So, we're excited to come here before you all today to tell you a little bit about our But first, let me tell you about our communities, because I want to make sure that you're aware of what properties we own and manage currently at the Housing Authority. That is Seaboard Square. Most of you may formally know this as Jeffrey Wilson. That is 221 units. Then next, we have Lexington Place. That is the former Lincoln Park community, and that is 72 units. Dale Homes is our largest property, and that is 296 units. The next few slides are of Westbury, and that is formerly the Atterbarber site, so many of you may know that as Atterbarber. And here we have the cottages, and that is for our senior and disabled community, and that consists of 16 units.
Excuse me, Ms. Winston. Ma'am, could you bring the mic closer to you?
Sure. Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Let me slide over. Okay. So, where are we? Okay. Holly Square, former Atterbarber community, and that consists of 57 units. And next, we have Westbury Pine, and that consists of 58 units. And then we have Westbury King Square, and that is 57 units. Phoebus Square is our senior community, and that consists of 122 units. Hope Village consists of 48 units. And this slide is a little bit out of order, so let me go back here. Hamilton Place, and that is 168 units. So, as you can see, we have a total of 1,117 units that we currently own and manage, and then we also provide additional housing choice vouchers for about 2,000 families. So, I'm going to turn it over now to our Resident Services Manager, so she can tell you a little bit about our programs, and then I will be available, and she as well, to answer any questions that you may have. Good evening. Good evening. I'm a little nervous, so just bear with me, okay? So, I want to talk to you a little bit about some of our programs and services that we offer all of our residents with PRHA. So, some of the highlights is that we have really revamped a lot of the programs and services at the Housing Authority with our Resident Services Department, and so we're really looking into transforming lives of everyone that we serve. So, some of the programs that fall under Resident Services include our Family Self-sufficiency Program, a Jobs Plus program. We work with youth, seniors, and those that are disabled. We have a homeownership program, resident councils, and a few grants that we recently received, one through the Department of Criminal Justice Services and one with Centerra Healthcare Services. And that's some of the team that really work hard to help engage our residents in services. So, we do have resident councils who typically live in our communities, as well as those with a housing choice voucher, with the primary goal of empowering the residents to take an interest within their communities. Some of the activities that our resident councils have done would be back-to-school drives, holiday drives, food drives, giveaways, and so they are up and running and really wanting to make a difference in the communities in which they live in. We have also a Jobs Plus program. We received a grant through HUD, and that program really focuses on unemployment and poverty among our public housing communities. So, residents who live in our Seaboard Square community are eligible to participate in the Jobs Plus program, and what we do with that is that we have employment specialists that work with those residents to increase their earned income. And while they're enrolled in this program, what's unique about the Jobs Plus program is that, once they receive an increase in their earned wages, instead of, you know, their rent is going to go up, but what the program does, it pays the increases on their behalf, which allows them to save more money, to work on their credit, and that's just for our public housing communities. Those are some events that we've had with our Jobs Plus program. We have a working relationship and partnership with Portsmouth Public Schools, and together we've done a few joint job fairs. We have what we call Working Wednesdays, where employers come out who are actively looking to hire our residents, and so we work with them to get prepared for that, so interviewing skills, working with them with their resumes, and just getting them prepared. I know that after speaking with HR with Portsmouth Public Schools, they were very excited after we did the first joint one, and we've done a few since then, and we've had a great turnout. So, we've been able to really get our residents hired. And this is just a few of the events that we've done. We've done job readiness workshops, financial literacy for kids, economic mobility workshops, some of the Working Wednesdays where we've worked with HRT to get our residents trained and hired, resume workshops as well. We also have a program called the Family Self-sufficiency or FSS program, and that program is open and available to all of our residents, whether they live in our housing communities or they have an HCV voucher, so they may live throughout the city. And with the Family Self-sufficiency program, they receive individualized case management, education and job training, financial empowerment, community connections, escrow savings, and much more. And we've had quite a few of our residents who have, that's enrolled in our Family Self-sufficiency program, that have earned escrow accounts. We're talking, you know, $20,000, $30,000, and they've been able to, you know, put down payment money down to purchase a home. So, you know, happy to say that within, I've been with the agency since 2010, and with the Family Self-sufficiency program, we've had about 18 homeowners. And so, just really grateful for the work that we've, you know, really have been doing and the partnerships that we have been able to forge with community partners. And these are some of the programs and information sessions that we host regularly, so those that would like to join the program, they can come in and attend. We just recently had a family fun night as a response to HUD Strong Families, bringing the families together, and so we had the fire department to come out, and so the youth were able to, you know, get on the fire truck. We also had Behavior Healthcare Services to come out and talk about various resources that are available to them, as well as Bon Secours. And so, with Resident Services, we rely heavily on the community partners that we have. With our seniors and disabled programs, we have a case manager who works with our seniors that are 62 years of age or older, and residents who have disabilities, and she's working with them to make sure that they're able to age in place. We've partnered with Senior Station and a lot of different organizations to assist our seniors and disabled, and I would like to add that our seniors that live in our communities are very, very active. They go on, you know, a variety of just trips. Every week, I'm asking the case manager, "Where are you guys going today?", and they're always going somewhere, because we want to keep them active and aging in place. Some of the partners would be our Sheriff's Department, Police Department, the Fire Department, Senior Station, Department of Human Services, just to make sure that they are aging in place, and we're providing safety, community activities, as well as education. And these are some of our seniors in action. So, as you can see, some CPR training. We've partnered with the American Heart Association to do cooking classes and demonstrations, and then for breast cancer awareness. Youth programs. Here at the Housing Authority, the main goal of our youth programs is to ensure that the youth that we serve, we're able to expose them to life outside of their current circumstances, and so we're able to do that with a variety of partnerships that we have. So, we were fortunate to receive a youth bill grant through the Department of Labor, and with that grant, we're targeting young adults between the ages of 18 and 24, who have dropped out of high school, who don't have their GED or high school diploma, to provide them with the skill set. And so, they're able to earn their GED, they're able to get some national credentials in construction. We do have a partnership with Portsmouth Public Schools with adult education to get their GED, a partnership with Tidewater Community College, where they can receive their trades, and they're also receiving a financial stipend with that, as well as financial literacy, mentorship opportunities, internships, exposure to different fields, and so they will also start training with QED to get a certification in cableway inspection. And so, we've been really excited about their youth bill program, and I would like to just add that that program is open to any young adult that lives in the city of Portsmouth that reside in the zip codes of 23704 and 23707. So, you don't have to live in housing to participate in the youth bill program, and we are currently still accepting applications for those that are interested in the program. It works. The students have been able to save money, work on their credit. We have a partnership with Breeden Construction, and we had a few of our students who currently have their construction credential to interview last week with Breeden, and we received really high marks on that. And just really wanted to highlight the youth bill program, because we're actively, like I said, we're actively seeking those young adults that live within the city of Portsmouth that are interested in that program, and so we're super excited about that and all of the partnerships that we have. A few pictures from our youth bill program. And like I said, we have partnerships with Tidewater Community College. The city of Portsmouth Department of Economic Development has been very instrumental in providing training and opportunities for our young adults. Learn to Build, Portsmouth Public Schools, Department of Labor, and just an array of various partners that really work with us to see that that happens. At the end of the program, the Housing Authority, they donated a plot of land, and the students will have an opportunity to build a home from the ground up, and that home will be sold to a low-income, first-time home buyer, and so that's their way of giving back to the community as well. That's a few pictures. Project Discovery, looking at high school students that have a track to attend college, and so we've partnered with the STOP organization, where they come in and they're able to take our youth to various college tours, working with the parents about the FAFSA grants and opportunities, because a lot of our students will be the first generation to attend college, and if we have the opportunity to provide them with the resources, we should do that. And so, we're always looking at who's already doing the work in the community, and let's just partner with them. So, we rely heavily on a lot of the partnerships in our communities. So, we talked about Project Discovery. After-school summer camp programs. This summer, through a variety of grants that we've received, we were able to sponsor 50 youth to attend summer camp throughout the city. We've been able to send our youth to summer camp with Portsmouth Parks Recreation and Tourism, the YMCA Boys and Girls Club, as well as Big Homies. And so, we had a day where families were able to see what's available to you, and we were able to sponsor quite a few families. And so, with Resident Services, it's really about the exposure to our youth. If I could share a quick story really quickly. We had took a group of kids to the aquarium in Virginia Beach, and we're in the van, and they're all super excited, and we go through the tunnel, and we get over by Harbor Park, and the kids were so excited, and one of the kids looked at me and said, "Ms. Brittany, I'm out of town. I've never been through the tunnel." You know, I'm getting a little emotional, but what we do with Resident Services is really about changing the lives of the residents that we serve, and it starts with the youth. And if we can, you know, look at them and say, "Hey, there's something outside of your community," because a lot of times, they go and, they go to school in the communities in which they live. They shop in the communities in which they live, their neighbors, they don't see any other things. And so, we really pride ourselves in exposing our youth, and a lot of times, their families as well, to something outside of what they sometimes have never imagined for themselves. And so, we're just super excited about the work that we're doing at the Housing Authority. I go to a lot of trainings and places, and people are like, "You guys have that grant? You're just the Housing Authority." We're not just the Housing Authority. We do more than just house our residents. We want to see them, you know. We may be the only landlord that don't want to keep our residents, you know. We would like to see them grow, and then come back and share their stories, become homeowners, possibly within the city, you know, and really to be able to just assist them in any way that we possibly can. So, those are just a few other flyers. We've partnered with the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, and this summer, we also partnered with the city with the youth employment. And so, we have a few of our youth that are working with Parks and Rec. We have one that was just paired with emergency response, and so they're just been super excited to get their checks with Next Gen. They've been placed throughout different departments in the city, and so we're just super thankful for that, because a lot of our youth were asking, "Well, what are you going to do with your money?", and they're like, "We're going to save it, because we know school is coming back up," and so they're able to, you know, get some of the things that they really would like for themselves, and so to be able to help them with bank accounts and start thinking about, you know, your future. A New Start, that is a program we received a grant through the Department of Criminal Justice Services to talk about violence intervention and prevention in our communities. And one unique thing about that program is that we have a support group for families who have been victims of gang and gun violence, and so they meet monthly. We have Behavior Healthcare Services to come in and provide their group therapy, as well as individual therapy, because sometimes, you know, when there is violence in a community, it doesn't just impact the person, it also impacts their families as well. And so, to be able to have those resources to help them navigate, and there is also some funding with that grant, where we were able to give some financial stipends to some of our youth as well, to try to deter them from, you know, committing acts of violence in the city and beyond. So, we talked about that. Delta Gems, we partnered with Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and they brought on Delta Gems in our Seaboard Square community, and for our young women, young adults, to see women in power and to see them, where they come from, and to be able to have a mentor to talk about self-esteem, and all of those great things have really been instrumental. This is our first year with the Delta Gems program, where they're talking about academic professional goals, college tours. We had a mother that called us the night that we had the information session, and it was like, "Can my niece, my niece don't live in Portsmouth, but can she come?", because they were just really vested into that, and so that's a great partnership that, you know, they came on, and it has been really fulfilling to our families, especially our young, young women that are in middle school, high school, and just to be able to see women in other aspects, and so we wanted to highlight the Delta Gems program. Act Now, Portsmouth Coalition, Friends of the Portsmouth Juvenile Courts, we've partnered with them. They've been a great partner of us, partner with us. They've been sending referrals for our, what's my program? Youth Build, we've got a lot of programs, for our Youth Build program, and they provide the case management and wraparound services as well. So, we talked about that. We talked about Act Now. And then with Centerra, they provided us funding for youth employment services, health-related activities in our communities, and so we're thankful for their grant as well. And I wanted to just show some of the partnerships that we have with our Resident Services Department. We couldn't do the work that we do without the partnerships that we have, and so just wanted to kind of, you know, highlight our partners. And then those are just some few pictures from our HUD Strong Families, Family Fun Day. And then our motto, "Changing our communities, one impact at a time." A few more pictures for you, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farneson. Many of you all don't know, and Resident Services is dear and near to my heart. I started out in Ms. Farneson's position in 1998 year at the Housing Authority. I've, you know, been around quite a few other housing authorities, and I would say that Portsmouth, in terms of Resident Services and program, is the best that I've ever experienced. So, we have a robust program. We're excited. We have passionate staff like Ms. Farneson, who are doing the work every day, and so we appreciate our partnership. We appreciate the city. We know it takes a lot, and we rely on these partnerships. So, I just wanted to afford you all the opportunity, just to share a little bit about what we do, so that you are further informed and knowledgeable about the programs that we have here at the Housing Authority. At this time, I can open it up for questions, if you all have any.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
First, I want to thank you guys for the presentation and some of the programs that you talked about. I used to work for PRHA in the Self-sufficiency program, where I know Ms. Brittany, and you did a good job, just so you know, you didn't seem nervous at all. For me, I speak with the citizens a lot, especially those who are in your community, and I have a family member in the community. I know you guys know who that is. One of the things that they talk about is some of the issues that they have as far as the maintenance issues in your community. They're telling me, and this is coming from people in the community, just speaking with them, some of it is firsthand knowledge, but some of it comes from the community. They're telling me that, you know, they're having a hard time getting some of their issues addressed. One particular, and I heard this from 10 different people, is out Hamilton Place when it comes to the AC issues. They're saying that, one, you guys aren't coming to fix those issues, and when they are addressed, one, they're putting AC units inside the, inside the homes, which is two things with that. You know, it's been pretty hot out here, and most of those AC units, I think we can agree, won't cover the whole house. But the other issue is that when it comes to the electricity bill, the bills that they have to pay, that's a whole nother bill, because unlike the other unit, it shuts off when the house gets to a certain temperature. But when it comes to those, they stay on all day, which adds another expense to what we know most of our, a lot of our families, I won't say most, live in poverty, and I know that's a, that's a big thing for you guys. So, my question to go with that, and I know that I mentioned the AC issue in particular, but just in particular, when it comes to the maintenance issues, even with my family member, I've seen that when she called, called or put in an order to get somebody to come out, it's taken weeks or months. I've even had to come to you before regarding the issue with that. So, my question to you is, how are you guys addressing those things? Because when speaking with the residents, they feel like, well, I'll be honest, they feel like you guys don't care, and I don't, I don't think that that's the issue, but they really have a big, and I'm hearing these issues from Dale's Homes, Seaboard Square, Hamilton Place, and some of the Westbury, some of the other communities. So, I wanted to know how you guys are addressing those issues for the residents.
Staffing has definitely been a challenge for us. We are down quite a bit of staff, especially in our maintenance department, and so we have had to rely on contractors to come out and provide services for us, and they are too experiencing staffing challenges. So, I would tell you that you're correct, and that our response time is probably not as good as it used to be, because we're having challenging with hiring staff, and this is just not unique to Portsmouth. I was at an executive director's roundtable a few weeks ago, and we're all having the same issues. So, staffing has been a problem since COVID, and we've relied on filling those gaps with temp workers, but many of the temp workers aren't skilled workers, so they aren't able to perform the functions that we need to. And so, we're just actively recruiting and hiring. We're participating in job fairs. We did a joint job fair with the Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, because they're having the same issues as well. So, we have relied on the window units in times where we're not able to fix the unit, because we want them to have some sort of cooling. It's been very hot, obviously. It's been very hot, obviously. And so, in terms of their electric bill is going up, if they reach out to their manager, we can make adjustments as needed to those bills. So, that's, that's an easy fix.
So, as far as the, and the AC one is the, is the one that has come to me more often because of the weather being so hot. I know you guys say you're looking for temps and things of that nature. Is it possible, or do you guys have the resources to cover that with contractors? Because we have a lot of those companies around the area. And it's concerning because some of these people are elderly. I mean, but whether they're elderly, whatever the case may be, it's hot. And we just don't want them, I don't think you guys want that. I don't think none of us want that, something happened to somebody because of the heat. So, is that, is that possible? Is that an avenue to look at contractors?
Yes, and we have. We've looked at contractors. So, we definitely will rely on contractors. I think I see now probably more contractors on my properties than, than we do staff. So, definitely, we rely on contractors as well.
Okay. And I'm not, I promise I'm not going to address all the issues. There's a lot, so I'm going to talk with you guys, some of it privately. But the other thing was, and this has always been an issue. When I lived out there, of course, you know, I lived out there as home, the towing issue. What I'm hearing is that, one, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure you'll correct it. And that's what we want. But when it comes to the towing issue, one, they're saying that the visitors, when it comes to visitors parking in certain neighborhoods, they don't have passes for visitors parking. And which means they have to go to the office to get a pass. And if the office is not open, their visitors can't get a pass. And then, there's a towing company that will come and tow your car if you don't have that pass. And they're charging the residents $380 to get their, to get their cars back. I listened to your presentation, and you've mentioned again, like, property is a big thing when it comes to the communities. And that, we know that's a big thing when it comes to crime in general. Their concern is that once those cars are towed, that they're not able to get those cars back because they're not able to pay those prices. Is there any other way that you can address the visitors' parking issue when it comes to that? Opposed to going to that option of getting towing? Because that's, I've addressed that to, I don't know if it was to you, but I know I've talked to one of you guys about the towing issue. Because a lot of the times, as somebody who's familiar with this issue, and I've had my cars towed when I was visiting my mom one time out there as home, when she stayed out there. That's a, that's a major issue. And it discourages people from, one, wanting to come visit the community. But it also makes the residents itself feel like that their visitors are not welcome in the community. And even some of them, some of them themselves may can't get the parking pass that you guys offer. Because I know you guys offer a parking pass, but you got to make sure that you're the person that's registered to the car and all that. Is there a better way that can, you can address that without, without having those, people losing their cars and having to pay that tremendous amount of money to get that? And even with the visitors' parking issue, I know, I think, I forget the neighborhood. But is there a way that you, with the visitors' parking spaces that you use, especially in a situation where they can't go get a visitors' parking pass? Is there any way that that can be sufficient enough so that people can have visitors out the community and things of that nature?
Let me answer the first part of your question. We've resulted in towing because the residents were frustrated with them not coming home and having parking in front of their units. And so, we've had a lot of visitors and outside guests, and our priority is our residents. And so, this was done because of the frustration that they were having when they come home late at night or from work or with their kids or with groceries, and they have to park far away. And so, that's why we started back towing with the properties. Now, visitor, they can get visitor passes from the rental office if they know they're going to have guests over the weekend. If we're not open, they can certainly get those passes in advance. If they have a guest that's going to be staying with them for a week, they can get a week visitor pass. So, we, the passes are available. And again, our priority is our residents. And so, because they, you know, out of frustration, you know, were disappointed in us not towing and not having available parking for them, that's why, you know, we contacted a towing company to move forward with that. As far as the pricing, I can get some more information on that to see if there's a way to reduce the pricing. However, we have limited spaces out in our communities. And so, we're going to make sure that our residents have the parking first.
So, based off what you just said, even if you, on the weekend, if you, if you don't know that you're going to have a visitor, you still would have to have the visitor parking pass?
Now, some of our communities have visitor spaces, so they don't need a parking pass. So, as long as they park in a visitor's space, they're fine. Many of our communities such as Westbury or Seaboard, they have street parking, so they can park on the street. We only tow what's inside on our properties.
So, I'm talking about those properties. So, for those, like, say for instance, if I was to go out one of those neighborhoods that need, you need a parking pass. Am I able to go out there and park on that day? Or do I need a visitor's parking pass to park in that community?
So, if you're parking in a visitor's space, then you're okay. Now, our residents, all of our residents are afforded a pass for their personal vehicle. And then, they get guest passes if they need them. And in some places, parking is really not an issue. And so, it may not be as heavily enforced. But for instance, Dale has been a problem. Phoebus is another one of our communities, especially when our senior properties, that they can't, they come home and they can't park anywhere. So, certainly, if they anticipate having a guest or, you know, someone over the weekend, then we will give them a pass. Some of our communities, they have nurses that come in. And so, we will give them a long-term pass if they have a caregiver or nurse or something that's gone. And we can give them an extended pass, you know, for, you know, a month or two at a time.
So, I get what you're saying. I'm talking about, so, for those who you do need a pass, if they, if they need, if they actually need a pass and they can't park in the visitors' parking, is there an option, if they come in on the weekend or late after the hours, is there an option for them to get a visitor's pass without, without having, without knowing in advance? Because a lot of times, most, a lot of people don't know in advance that people are coming to visit. Some people surprise them and things of that nature. Or it's hard to anticipate. You might make plans at 5 o'clock Friday for somebody to come Saturday or Sunday. So, I'm talking about those neighborhoods.
After hours. So, I can look into that for you to see what options are available and get back with you.
I appreciate that. And my, my last thing, and the rest, I'll get with you guys on. This has been a, we've had this conversation. There's been a, we had a resident that come up here about this. It's been a long, growing conversations about activities in the community constantly for the children in those communities. And one, we've talked about is the basketball court. Now, I know you guys took those away in 2003 because you said that the crime, that's where crime, most crime persists. But from, from looking at the stats since 2003, PRHA has still had some of the highest crime rates in the city of Portsmouth. So, I'm not necessarily seeing that as being an issue. And as somebody who benefited from those opportunities and grew into the community, I can say that crime wasn't one of the things that we gained from being on the basketball court. What we did is we had, it gave us something to do. It gave us an avenue to keep us out of trouble. But it also benefited the community because when you put kids in a situation where they have things to do, they're less likely to get in trouble. And even if you have people who, who use the court as a crime spot for them to develop a crime or whatever the case may be, the benefit is better, is greater because of all the children who have opportunities and who have time to do positive things on those basketball courts. And my question to you is, is there any way that we can, with the communities that you have, we can work that back into the space? Because out, one, out Hamilton Place in particular, I know that people in the community have bought a basketball court for the community, but they were asked by PRHA to take it, take it down. But they were using that as an avenue for the kids to help build the community, help them take pride in their community. Like, for instance, they told the kids that if they helped clean the community, that they would put it out for them to play. And they would, then after they're done playing, they would lock it back up to keep them out of trouble. And those kids would clean the community up so that they can play on the basketball court, which ultimately teaches them, one, like I said, a sense of community. Because we know one of the things that deal with crime is how a community looks. The broken glass, one, if there's a broken glass in this neighborhood, it's more likely for, for those to participate in crime because of the sense of not caring about their community. So, my question is, is there any way that you guys can look back into doing those type of things? Or even if the community wants to provide those opportunities for the children in their communities, can they be free to do that?
I think you have to look back, probably the 90s, early 2000s, when many housing authorities start removing basketball courts in their communities. Many reasons were because of, it was a breeding ground for criminal activity. It was a lot of gang violence. It was gambling. It was fighting. It was noise, broken, it was a maintenance nightmare to keep up with picking up the glass and the trash also in the communities as well. And so, many housing authorities chose to move away from the basketball courts because of the nuisance that it was bringing to the community. And not, the residents, a lot of times, did not get to enjoy the basketball court because it was outside forces, you know, that were coming in, taking over these basketball courts. And so, it wasn't a controlled environment. So, the little kids or the middle school kids didn't really get an opportunity to play on the court. I think providing maybe a more controlled environment or structured environment maybe is partnering with the city that can transport our residents to. We have J.E. Parker. We have the Sportsplex. We have neighborhood facility that have basketball courts. I think that would be a better alternative. We do have crime in our communities in some, in some of them. And I think with further, putting a basketball court, I think would further exacerbate that problem right now.
Well, I'll say this, because all those issues that you just said, shooting dice, fighting, even, I mean, you missed one, they're shooting each other out there. Those things still happen even without the basketball court. And as somebody, with some of the issues you said, like the kids not being able to enjoy it, they took them in 2003. I was still a kid back then on those basketball courts. And I remember coming home, getting off the bus for IC Norcom, and them putting it on the truck and leaving with it. And everything that you mentioned, as a kid who grew up in those neighborhoods, I didn't have any trouble with getting on the basketball court. We didn't, we did have people from outside the community that came, but they were coming to play basketball with us. And we were actually having, I would go out Jeffrey Wilson or different neighborhoods and play basketball with them. And it was kind of building a camaraderie with them. And a lot of the people I know today that come from other neighborhoods is because of those opportunities that I had. So, I know that's, I know that's what was told. But as somebody who actually grew up in those communities, who actually seen it firsthand, I can tell you that those things are just not true. And I can tell you now that when you listen to those in the community, these are some of the things that they were looking for. And I'm glad you guys put a playpok in the community because that was, that was something that residents were talking about as well. But I think that we gotta, we gotta stop. We gotta, we gotta stop using certain excuses. And I'm not saying in general because that's not your, that's not your frame of thought. That's what PRHA did back then, and that's what the cause was. But I'm saying that that frame of thought is why that our kids feel like nobody cares about them or it's less opportunities for them. Because we only, a lot of times, we have a lot of people speaking about those communities who've never lived in the community, who've never experienced those communities. They read books, they hear research, but they don't actually go to the community and live in those communities and see what those things can actually do for people. I'm a perfect example. If it wasn't for those opportunities, because we couldn't go to the rec center, we had no rides to get there. I didn't, my parents didn't have a car. So, that was our opportunity. That was our space to stay out of trouble, to do positive things, and to be, to help us become productive people in the community. So, I get what the nation, HUD probably, or whatever the case may be. But this is some of the things that the community wants in their community. And I think these are, because ultimately, we're all talking about what we think. You said what you think. I'm saying what I think as well. I think ultimately, we need to talk to the residents in the community and ask them what they want. Because I'm sure they'll tell you, they told me. And try to kind of execute those things so that we can feel like, one, that we give them a sense of pride because we're listening to them, but also, we're taking alternatives to combat some of the issues that we have. Because all of those things that you mentioned can still happen in the rec center, but it's not happening in the rec center.
One of the things I also feel to mention is the liability and insurance also. That was another major impact that housing authorities moved away from allowing the basketball courts because of the liability and the cost of insurance to insure properties that have basketball goals.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Councilman Moody. So, you have the floor.
Thank you. And thank you for that enlightening presentation. You mentioned that you were nervous. We would have never known it unless you told us. And you weren't one bit. Super presentation. I do have some questions reference to the job program. You mentioned that relative to Seaboard. Are some of these programs community-specific are, is a jobs program open to all of the residents?
So, Jobs Plus is open for Seaboard community, but we have other programs that prepare our residents for employment outside of the Jobs Plus program. There were certain criteria that was in place for HUD to award us that grant. And Seaboard Square met that criteria. But we certainly afford the same opportunities under a different, you know, name or grant to all of the residents that live in our community.
So, so the application for grants, the grants are done community-specific, not as PRHA?
Sometimes they are, and sometimes they have different stipulations. So, we have what we call mixed income properties. And so, on the outside, it may look like, okay, everything is Dale. Dale is really not considered public housing in the terms of HUD eyes. It is not public. It's tax credit project base. And so, you all may think it is public housing. So, depending on the funding source that went in for the construction of those housing, depends on the type of funding and programs available. So, for instance, you know, with the HCV voucher program, it's different from our housing program. And so, some of the programs are only available for our housing residents, and some are only available for our HCV participants. But because we don't, we don't want to have a gap in services, we, to the extent possible, try to mimic both sides and find some funding that can do that.
Do you have your own grants writer?
Do we have a grants writer? Ms. Fannelson has been our grants writer.
You're standing next to her.
She's alive. She does a lot. But no, we've hired grant writers in the past. And Ms. Brittany Fannelson has applied for several grants for us as well. We applied for the Youth Bill Grant. We solicited our grant manager for that and for the Criminal Services Grant that we received. We solicited a grant writer for that.
And on the jobs program, do you have any facts as far as the number of placements that you received that you could get back with us with? I think that would, that would be a good.
The number of placements.
Yeah, job placements. And also, your list of partners is certainly impressive. Now, do those partnerships, do they come to the Housing Authority? Or do y'all, are y'all proactive and? proactive and, and go out and recruit potential partners?
Both. So we actually recruit as well, but we have them to reach out to us. But you know, our resident services department, they are boots on the ground. So they're looking always for other opportunities and other programs for our residents.
Okay. On the youth build program, on building the house, now is that in partnership with Habitat for Humanity or other partners as well?
So that is not in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, that is with Learn to Build partnership and then we have the partnership with TCC as well. They do the GED training and job skills training as well and the Portsmouth Public Schools, we partner with them as well.
I would think Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association might be a good, a good one to reach out to.
We'll certainly reach out to them.
And what, what's the timetable for the, the start of the building project?
Well, we're going to start the construction of the home. We're looking to start that sometime this year. So we donated property that we had here to the authority and so we're going to let these younger men and women just build us a house and then we're going to sell it to first time home buyer. So they can put the training to work now and actually build a home and they'll be supervised by licensed general contractor as well.
Sure. I, I would, I would hope that we really promote that. I would think that would be a very positive thing for the.
We absolutely will.
For, for the youth participating as well as the housing authority and Portsmouth as a whole.
Yes, we absolutely will. We're excited about that program.
Your story about the, one of the residents, one of the kids, I guess, taking a trip through the tunnel, that, that was really heartwarming, you know. We, we, we take that for granted and in fact, it's usually, oh my God, I gotta go through the tunnel. But we, we don't realize that some people's world is very small and things that we take for granted shouldn't be taken for granted. That, that was a touching story. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you mayor. Thank you Ms. Winston and Ms. Brittany for the presentation as a former liaison to PRHA. I really enjoyed everything that was shared. Just a couple of questions, when you went through the listing of how many units were at each property, seeing that Dale's home is the largest property at 296 units in the past, it had also been a location that has been breeding crime. And I know that Ms. Winston and I had had conversation prior about why wasn't that one of the properties that was considered for rehabilitation, revitalization like they did Lexington Place? And you shared that information, I think it would be good for public to know as well because I get a lot of questions about that sometimes.
I'm not sure why the previous administration, you know, decided to keep Dale Home. You know, it was built in nineteen forties, we did a renovation on Dale Homes in twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. And because of that renovation, we put tax credits in that property, we're now subject to a fifteen year compliance period. And so what that means is that this Dale Home has to remain compliant as low income housing tax credits for fifteen years. If not, there are substantial penalties that would be imposed if we were to move forward with let's say the demolition of Dale Home. You have to look at the tax credit that went in, investors, they look to claim those credits over a period of time and if they're unable to claim those periods, credits over a period of time, we would be responsible for paying those funds back to them. Not only that, there is debt on the property in the form of loans, so the debt would have to be paid and then we'd also have to relocate 296 families. So I'm not sure why it was decided to rehab Dale Home as opposed to demolishing it. And so we're doing the best, you know, of what we have, so.
Okay. And another question is on the, the deeper look, when you offered, showed the resident services and the programs, there was one up there for the Department of Criminal Justice Services scholarships. And I know that our Attorney General Jason Myares has a ceasefire program that he's working with our Commonwealth attorney here in Portsmouth through, but was just wondering what that Department of Criminal Justice Services scholarship entailed.
So with that funding, we were able to do the families of, that have been victims of gun and gang violence. We were also able to provide some employment opportunities and stipends with those fundings from that grant for the young adults to kind of deter them from that. So the support group and also for therapy sessions for our families. And so we were able to do both group and individual therapy sessions with, with that grant.
Okay, amazing.
So we were also with this grant, able to partner with I.C. Norcom High School. We did an event on gun violence and that was very successful. So that allowed us to work with the youth. They read a book, Long Way Home, and they learned about decision making and how one thought process or you can just change the trajectory of your whole life. And so they learned how to handle pressure, how to handle disputes and it was very enlightening, enlightening for us to be there and participate that, with them in that endeavor. So that was one of the events that we were able to put on with those funds with I.C. Norcom High School.
And my next question is recently received a call as recent as today where people who are homeless may be looking for housing and didn't see anything that is in your track. I know the city is working on a homeless shelter, but is there anything that you offer for people who are looking for housing in that avenue?
So the housing authority does not provide emergency housing. Our programs, most of them you have to be on a waitlist and, and sometimes they're on a waitlist for several years before they actually house. We do partner with the Continuum of Care here in Portsmouth, so we work with the service providers in the city of Portsmouth. That is a requirement of our HUD funding that we partner with them to make sure that they're aware of opportunities in our housing and once it becomes available. But we don't have any type of emergency housing in the, with the housing authority.
Right. And my last question, comment is the impressive list of partners that you have and I know the city of Portsmouth is one and I know that we give you a small stipend of money annually. Do any of these other partners contribute money to help you with those programs that you spoke of today?
Centaur Grant, I would, I could get you a list and let you know, you know, maybe the dollar value. Most of them are in kind service that provided, but we have a small amount that do provide some financial assistance because some of the grants do require a monetary match as well.
Okay. And last plug, is this a great job on adding the Delta Gems into the program as we are members of Delta Sigma Theta Society Incorporated. It is always enlightening to see the services that we offer to empower young girls and hope that our fraternities will take heed and also begin to offer some programs for the male youth because I think that they could benefit from these college tours and some of the empowerment programs. They bring in people to speak to them. I've been a speaker, our Commonwealth attorney has been a speaker and you know, just something else to, to get our youth engaged with mentorship programs. And we do offer embody for young men too, so maybe that will be one that'll be offered at a future date. But great job, I enjoyed the presentation and good luck on everything.
Thank you.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for a very informative brief this evening. Regarding the resident services, I'm wondering if those services are only available to the eleven hundred and seventeen families that are resident or does it also include the families that are in the voucher program?
They include the families that are in the voucher program as well.
Okay, thanks. And there wasn't any information regarding usage of the various programs. Are the, the programs that you listed through the briefing tonight, are those full, half full? How are we doing at getting people into the programs to take advantage of them?
You know, it, it varies. I would absolutely love to see more participation in, in our programs. I was sharing with Ms. Farnes and earlier today, I said, I came from a generation where your parents didn't necessarily ask you what you wanted to do, they told you. And so our housing is not contingent upon them participating in a program and so sometimes we don't get the participation that we like. And so we absolutely would love to see the numbers increase because we have a wide variety, robust program and so we need the participation, so. It's not where we want it to be, but it is, you know, we have work to do.
And I guess that, so having seen a lot of other programs around the city that are undersubscribed, I think one of the issues that we collectively have is just getting the message out that, that these programs are available, what they can do, the fact that they're available without cost in, in many, most cases. And so I, I don't know whether communicating the availability is an issue for you all, but I've certainly seen it in other programs around the city. Shifting gears, can you speak to security at your housing locations? Is there hired security at every location? Can you talk to that, please?
We do have hired security, we contract our security officers and they rotate throughout the evenings, they come in a certain time of the evening and they stay until, you know, early morning hours. Again, HUD does not provide us funding for security and so we've spent quite a bit of money on security in our neighborhoods, but it's needed and we want our residents to feel protected. And so it's very costly and so some of the other capital needs have to get delayed because we're paying for these security costs, so.
Okay.
Definitely a big cost for us.
Yeah, thanks. And to Councilman Barnes' earlier point about the broken glass theory, I, I know from walking through the neighborhoods that I've been through on reset walks, that, that the maintenance issues that, that he spoke to at least contribute, in my opinion, to the notion that, that maybe we as a collective don't care enough about them. And, and when there's a sense that we don't care, then there's a loss of hope and, and that invites crime into the neighborhood. So I, I know finding workers to do the maintenance is a challenge for everybody right now, but I just want to encourage you to stick with it and, and stay on it because it's really important to, to maintain the, the neighborhoods that, that you all are, are responsible for, to, to send the right message to our residents that, that, that we care.
So absolutely, we will definitely stick with that. One of the initiatives that we have is also section three, so we employ section three workers. And if you're not familiar with that term, they are residents that live in our communities and we hire them to pick up the grounds in the morning, to clean the common areas and things of that nature as a way to provide financial assistance to them, but also to keep our communities clean.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I know Mr. Hugo said, asked about the, the programs as far as them being filled or whatever the case may be. To, to Mr. Carter, maybe we could help advertise those programs because those are Portsmouth residents and that is a subsidy of, under us. And also just to add to that, we need to do a better job of advertising our programs as well. But maybe we can help them with that because sometimes when I see them post on their page, I would, I would share their information, share whatever the program is, or I would say something about it and then people will say that, you know, they didn't know about it. Whether it's their, their problem or not, it's still our problem because those are residents and our residents can benefit from their program. I did have a question. You mentioned about the, some of your kids in the Next Gen program. What kind of, what kind of opportunities you said that they were, jobs that they were working in?
So those students that enrolled in the Next Gen with the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, they were placed at various sites throughout the city. We have a few of our students that are working with Parks and Rec as well as with the IT department through the Next Gen program and also with other companies throughout the city as well. So it was twofold this year. Previous years, we just had Next Gen, but we also had some of our youth be employed through the city of Portsmouth with the summer work program. And so this year we were, we were able to get double of our students enrolled, so.
Thank you.
And thank you both ladies. This was really informative. And before you sit down, I want to just take a moment to congratulate the both of you on the wonderful work that you're doing at, at Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing. I can tell you that I grew up in public housing, my mother raised six children and had it not been for public housing and these types of programs, I would not be in the position that I am in today. One that speaks out to me is the Upward Bound program. You all may be familiar with Upward Bound and it is still in existence today. But it's those kind of programs and the work that you all do each and every day. We recognize that we can't save everybody in every situation, but based on the comprehensive nature of what you all do, you are making a difference in the lives of families and children and for that you should be commended. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
All right, thank you mayor. Thank you ladies, we do appreciate your presentation. Next presentation will be by Chief Jenkins. This is going, he's going to cover the Portsmouth United program. Give us some updates on where we are with that and how that program is moving forward.
Good evening mayor, vice mayor, members of city council, Mr. Carter, Ms. White, citizens of Portsmouth. Tonight I greet you and intend to give an update in regards to Portsmouth United. As you may remember, Portsmouth United is a community-based violence intervention and prevention initiative that was started early January as a proposal. During that time, we've had not only a few meetings as it relates, but to the upstart of that initiative, but also some additional back, behind the scenes work that has been completed so that we can continue along with the initiative. So as you remember, our inaugural meeting and just so, for your, your knowledge, this initial slide is bullet points for which I intend to discuss. Our inaugural meeting was had, had on January the ninth, 206 High Street. Of course, during that time, the initial meeting was to roll out the idea. One of the things that I wanted to, to highlight is that this is a community-based violence intervention plan. If you remember, at some point in time, as I stood here before you, one of the conversations that were had, was had, was that police chief was responsible for crime. If you remember that conversation and those words, I took that very seriously. But I also know that this particular situation is a very complex situation as we talk about crime. And one person, one entity, one group cannot solve this issue alone. So out of that conversation was the thought of Portsmouth United. Literally everyone that has a stake in the prosperity of Portsmouth and limiting the gun violence within our city should be a part of Portsmouth United. As we move forward, one of the things that was necessary is that, and again, you've heard similar presentations that talk about the. you've heard similar presentations that talk about the ecosystem of a community-based violence intervention program. What's important to remember about any presentation that you hear about this is that this is a ecosystem. It literally is everybody doing their individual part to address gun violence. I am very happy to what I've just heard from PRHA because they are very much a part of the ecosystem of Portsmouth. And some of the programs that they talked about today fall very much in line with Portsmouth United. So, I'm not going to go through every single one of those 10 recommendations. These are national recommendations that you can find from the Department, from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. And they're all backed by evidence-based initiatives. And so, one of the most important things that I want to highlight is that we set a clear goal. And that clear goal is that commitment to saving lives. I don't think there's anybody that is in this room or that will see or watch this presentation that can say that saving lives isn't the most important part of what we're trying to do with any initiative that we put forth. As we move down, we need, one of the other conversations is that we place the responsibility for reduction and attentiveness at the very top. And so, we've had conversations, the mayor was a part of a conversation with a representative from the Attorney General's Office that surrounded the National Network, which is a part of the Operation Ceasefire Initiative from Attorney General Mieres, along with several other things that were provided to the city of Portsmouth in addition to some funding, which I will talk about a little bit later. And so, through Portsmouth United, our job is to engage the stakeholders for their part within the reduction of crime. So, if you remember, last year, October 10th, that City Council voted and adopted a crime commission. And they were tasked with the purpose of dedicated to planning, implementing, and coordinating community violence strategies, including utilizing existing violence reduction grants and pursuing additional grant opportunities. So, when this first came out, one of the challenges was how would and what was the direction of this group and how it would fit into the ecosystem. So, as we move forward, one of the conversations that I am seeking some guidance on is exactly what direction from council on what that, what it looks like as it relates to the commission. I have my thought process, but I don't want to, I think it would be premature for me to answer that question without some guidance from you all. I think they fit very well in the ecosystem of Portsmouth United and its ability to function. However, again, I think that, you know, that there is a part of that that we, I need to hear from you and so do they. We're trying to move that forward along in the initiative. So, we also received as part of, part of our gun violence reduction strategy from the state through Department of Criminal Justice Services, an earmark that was given us, to us in the way of a grant. That grant was slated for, to be given to us for the next three years. So, we received, along with other cities, Norfolk and Richmond, $2.8 million, with a portion of that being to support our grassroots initiatives, our, as well as our nonprofits and things of that nature. I have committed to ensuring that we do at least 50% to support our grassroots initiatives. However, one of the things that, and here's a list of some of the things that were required that we, or suggested that we, that we develop, after-school programs, mentorships, in addition to educational and economic opportunities, case manager in trauma-informed, mental health care providers, credible messengers, things of that nature. So, as of June 17th, we opened up a block of mini-grants to support those nonprofits. That initiative closed on June 28th. As a result, we see, received 21 different grant applications that are being considered. And so, our goal is to vet those individuals. But one of the things that we want to ensure is that those individuals that are funded, spend that money within our city to ensure that we maximize the potential of the funding. And not only that, that we put some metrics in there so that we can measure the effectiveness of what was given to us should we need to not only look at expansion of these programs, but also look at supporting them so far as long-term endeavors. So, what are our next steps? Our next steps are, part of our earmark for this grant was we were required to hire a coordinator. That coordinator, again, one of the things that I continue to say that Portsmouth United was not intended to be a police department-led initiative. It is, it is going to be hard for the community or anyone else to, for me to stand here and say, this is what you need. This is part of the problem for decades anyway. So, it's important for the coordinator to be hired and to partner with not only law enforcement, but these nonprofits, what other city entities, what the business community, and for us collectively to address these issues and go move forward. Our part as law enforcement is to support them in their endeavors. We put that position out for application. We've received a number of individuals who applied. We've narrowed it down to approximately three. Our intention is to hire an individual before the end of the month. Next, we have also to hire at least six violence interrupters, four violence interrupters, but I am actually going to expand that to six violence interruptors. And so, one of the, some of the questions that frequently come out when we talk about interruption of violence is, how do you measure what they do? So, understand, violence interrupters are not individuals that filter information back to the police department. It's more of a credibility, credibility conversation that there is a relationship built with law enforcement, with these nonprofits, but also that they use their street credibility to be able to go out and have some of these crucial conversations with some of our most affected youth. So, unfortunately, that's oftentimes a one-way conversation. But understand, there is no, there is no mistake. If they, they know about a situation that potentially is violent, that's going to go down a particular area, it's their duty to make a response to law enforcement as any other citizen. However, the goal with violence interrupters is for us as a community, arm them with the challenges that we're having, maybe even the individuals that we know are associated with certain violent incidents, and for them to go out and mediate some of these situations before it becomes a larger presence in the community as well as law enforcement has to address it. So, the way you measure a lot of that is the absence of shootings, the absence of additional crime, the acts of things of that nature. So, you have to be very direct with not only the information that you supply them with, but what particular areas you have them function in so that you can actually measure that, the, obviously, the contacts that they make and things of that nature. And finally, we're, again, our goal when, as it relates to the grant is to review all of the applicants for the grant within an up-and-coming week, identify those individuals that actually qualify as nonprofits, ensure that the money allocated to them will be spent here within the city of Portsmouth. I can tell you, we have received some that frankly have not done, don't have any metrics here in this city. And so, I think it would not be wise for us to fund anybody that's going to take money away from, that could do us some good here. And last, hopefully within September, as the ecosystem of Portsmouth United becomes closer into vision, that we will start our weekly collaborative meetings to be held with, at 206 High Street. Understand that everybody has a part to play in this, whether you be clergy, whether it be council, department heads of other entities, but school system, PRHA. And so, we are asking that everyone join in and take their part. The more educated we are on what the issues are, the better off we can be to address them. And so, with that being said, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you for the presentation, sir. I see that you mentioned about screening some people out because they don't have any type of metrics. One of the things that we tend to do often in this city is that we tend to screen some of the nonprofit organizations and organizations out that have been around very long by opening up the process to, 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 when it comes to the grants and the different things, we opening up the process to everybody, which is okay. One of the things I would like for us to do is reward and help those programs out, those nonprofit programs out that have been here for years. And what I mean by that, a lot of the times, and we have a website and we have something that comes out into the mail that goes out on a monthly basis that illustrates and talks about all the organizations that we already have under our window. And we have some organizations that have been around for over 30 years that have the metrics in the city and they have the kids already and the people that we are trying to affect. But a lot of times, they're looked over. And me personally, and I think I've, I talked to you about this, I feel like we should go to them first because they've already shown what they can do for all these years without those grant opportunities, those funding opportunities. And some of them have some of the biggest programs in the city. I'd like to name a few when it comes to Churchland Soccer Club, Olive Branch Little League, Charles Pete Little League. These are organizations that have been around for years that never got any help from the city, other than the little things that we do for them. But they are centered around all of the participants that we need for a Portsmouth United or some of the other programs. So, my ask is that we not necessarily always put these opportunities out. We just go to them and help them out because these are the ones, they're really, like a lot of these organizations that we're looking at, and I know some of the ones that we look at, they go to these programs to get kids from them, opposed to us just going to those who are, they already have the kids. Like if you look at a Churchland Soccer Club, they probably got already 300, 400 kids. That'll be great for Portsmouth United. You go to Olive Branch Little League, I was out there this weekend and with all the support that they have and the parents, but they have over 200 kids. That'd be great with a Portsmouth United. You go to Charles Pete, they got over 200 kids. That'd be great. But too often, we look over them, these organizations, when it comes to some of these programs, I mean, some of these grant opportunities that we have, and we don't give them the opportunity when everything that we need is kind of right there at our hands if we go talk to them. So, my hope is that we go talk to them and work with them a little bit more and fund some of the things that they're doing so that in return, because again, those programs have been doing it for 20, 30, some even 40 years, longer than I've been living without any type of grants from the city, any type of opportunities. And they're still sustaining. So, that's metrics enough to show us that they can do it. And if they get just a little bit of money to help with their programs, they can probably do a lot more. They can probably turn 400 kids to 800 kids. They can, and it'll help them a lot more. And these are the, these are the things that I'm hearing when I'm talking to some of these, the presidents and board members of these organizations, how, one, they're not, they're not, they're not, they don't know about the opportunities. And even if they, if they know about the opportunities, at some point too, we gotta, we kind of gotta go talk to them and reward them. And I'm not saying you in general, because I think in overall, the city does it, period. But for me, when it, when it comes to working, and you already have how you want to do it, but my hopes in the future is that we go talk to them first before we kind of open it up to everybody else.
Understood, sir. I would just, just from my standpoint and my interpretation of what I actually heard. So, I think there are some, some things that I have to be cautious about as being the police chief. I don't want to be considered that I'm picking and choosing who gets funding and who doesn't. There was, from our standpoint, there was media coverage that's been associated with this funding. Council has talked about this funding. We put this information out for informational session for anyone who wanted to apply for this funding. And so, for me, because my name is attached to it and because it was put in our, which I would much rather not have to deal with. But because I'm attached to it, I have to be as fair as possible in how that money is dispersed. Those entities very much have an opportunity and I would encourage them to apply for funding. If they did not do it this time, there will be an additional earmark next year that was put into the state budget and I would encourage them to do so. We were, oftentimes when we get funding like this, because of situations, there is a knee-jerk reaction to throw money at an issue with not a lot of understanding of how that's to be utilized. What I wanted to do is ensure that we are able to look at, we are able to get the best value for what we were given in hopes of having some data that we could go to next time and say, maybe if you were able state to be able to assist us or City Council, this may be something we need to add into our budget as a talking point. We have some data to show that this is what we were able to do with that. And so, I do understand and definitely agree with you, but I have to be careful that I don't get painted into an umbrella that it looks as if I'm picking and choosing who gets what.
And I think we all can agree on that. And in my opinion, just my opinion, I don't think this should be solely on you anyway. I feel like it should come from somewhere where the city manager assigns somebody else to do it because ultimately, you, you got to deal with a lot more issues. And it is, it is not, and I know what you said at the beginning, but it's not your responsibility solely for the crime in the city because you can't wrest your way out of crime, you can't prosecute your way out of crime. So, you have to deal with some of the root issues. And regardless of what we're doing in this program, council and some other departments, we have to get into dealing with those root issues. The police department can't do that itself. For me, like I said, I hated that, that you got to be the one that's picking and choosing. My just, my hopes is when we do anything in this city that we don't always go out and look for, for people on the outside when we already have people on the inside that have a proven track record of dealing with certain things. Because we tend to do that often in this city. And I just want to make sure that, because sometimes we're looking past the people that can help us solve the problem when it comes down to it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillitt, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Jenkins, first of all, I want to thank you for your leadership on this Portsmouth United. Unfortunately, I agree with Councilman Barnes. I do not believe that you should be bearing this alone. This is not a police department issue, it is a city as a whole issue. And so, you know, when you look at the presentation, the task force was created in October of 2023, which was before Portsmouth United had October of 2023, which was before Portsmouth United had become a program. And so the idea of it at that time was to serve as the body that helps to create the strategic plan of bringing a holistic approach to solving crime. And that's also addressing the root causes, not just the violence, but workforce, education, healthcare, bringing all that to the table. Here we are today. I'm, I'm glad to see that there is a, a way that we can collaborate, the two entities, that is how it should have been from the very beginning. But I think it's very imperative of this council to, to, to provide you with that charge. Council, we did appoint individuals to the commission in, excuse me, in April of this year, but I'm still waiting on my colleagues for that meeting, for us to really develop what that strategy looks like now, especially with Portsmouth United being, because I think Portsmouth United is a great program. I just, for some, somehow, it just became a conflicting issue, which it should not have become. But this council, I would really like for this council to really help to put forth this vision that we said four weeks ago that we were going to do. I think it's only fair, not only to our police chief, but also to the citizens of Portsmouth, that we act in a responsive, responsive manner and to show that our citizens are our utmost responsibility. And so with that being said, I would really, if we can have this on an agenda for this council to discuss, whether it's through one-on-one meetings, whether it's through another work session, but this needs to be addressed immediately. Our police chief is doing enough in this community, whether, especially with the calls that he's responding to, I mean, he shouldn't have to be having to deal with developing an entire program, looking at grants, et cetera. And that was another responsibility that the crime task force was to help to oversee, is the distribution of grants. You have a body of citizens, experts, who would be serving to help to review these applications to distribute the money. And so if we could please move forward with this, I think it's past time, it's been eight months, and we're, we're doing our citizens a disservice.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the update. And I concur with my colleagues Tillage and Barnes regarding your input on this. I, I know that it's a lot of energy and a lot of effort, but I'm happy to hear that these program, this program will work collaboratively with the commission that we put in place. So we are in the process of trying to create a strategic plan and overview for the members who have already been selected to use as a guide to begin the process work. And I believe that the administrator that you look to hire, that will be coming on in July, may be a person who could probably help to oversee the commission and, and partially part of this program as well. One question that I have, last meeting, June 8th, 28th, we had a presentation from Cities United, and I just wanted to get your opinion on what you thought, how that could work collaboratively, or if we in fact need a program like that to blend in with Portsmouth United.
Yes, ma'am. So Cities United, Cities United is a great program. They're, they are like many other community-based violence intervention programs, which generally all follow the ecosystem of support from all entities, stakeholders within the community, whether it be Omaha 360, whether it be Cure in Baltimore, there, there are a number of them across the country that follow a similar model that have been having some success. The framework itself of Portsmouth United is already up. I will not tell you that as a consultant, that individual would be beneficial or would not. What I will say is that it is important for us as a city to, to decide a course and then plot that course as to, to what we're, how we're going to get there. I think that there is a lot of groundwork, and as, one of my challenges, just to be candid, was how the commission would fit, because from my, my standpoint, it was not my ta, my job based on what I thought or interpreted from, from you all to tell them what we were going to do, more so them to develop a, a robust plan, be able to present to you some real dialogue figures and give you some options that you all could take back and ponder. Of course, Portsmouth United now being where it is, and moving along, some of that has been, been, been done. However, I still think that there is a lot of work that, let me back that up. There is a lot of work that needs to be done on our end to be able to bring this home. I do intend to hopefully bring a few of those commissioners to be able to, to review the grant application so that they can see what is being submitted. We're, we're going to have to be very direct in what we do. So Mr. Smith in his presentation, I, I did watch, I did review it, and as, again, I won't say that it's not beneficial. I think that what he brings is, is experience to the point of already having set up something similar. And so there are some pitfalls that he may be, be able to help us navigate through. But we are in, already in the process, a lot of these things that we've already put in place, and the coordinator, the, the violence intervention interruption and a lot of the partnerships. Again, just sitting and, and listening to PRHAs' presentation, I know it's just a phone call at this point for us to be able to blend those things along with the Bloomberg Harvard study and some of those recommendations. Now it's about breaking down silos and, and getting folks together. Pastor Mariners walked, Dr. Mariners walked last week, getting them now galvanized to be able to address some of the situations, setting people with, with directions at this point. So I think we're already there, but I won't say that Mr. Smith's help at some point would not be beneficial, maybe even in a consulting role. Again, I, I yield on that.
Okay. And I know, had a conversation this week with our Commonwealth attorney regarding some robust violence interruption programs, and I guess some people are under the impression that some of the sources that we used in the past were not really true violence interruption programs, and that maybe there should be some other programs that we should seek out to actually address some of the issues of crime that we've been experiencing here lately in our city. So don't know if we call other people to the table to make a presentation, or just where do we find these robust violence interruption programs from? So I guess, you know, don't want to put any more burden on you to do that, but you know, we know with this program and the Safer Communities Grant that was provided, Senator Lucas put the budget amendment in last year and of course this year as well to, to allow for three more years. So that's an applaud to her and her team for thinking of Portsmouth and funneling that money here for us to handle the turnover, the high crime that we've been experiencing. So any comments that you have about if we should look at other, other programs?
Ma'am, at 100%, there, there is opportunity for us, if, if we can look at another locality, another city that has had success in their model, I think it would, would be unwise for us to reinvent the wheel. But we also understand that everything that works somewhere else may not necessarily work here. So there, there always has to be that customization part, that what fits here for, for Portsmouth. I stand ready at any time to, to listen, partner, you know, I, the last thing I want to anybody to think is I, I have all the answers, because I don't. And that's why I've been, you know, doing the education training over the last two years, trying to ensure that this initiative, where we are right now, I have enough knowledge in myself to, for what it should look like on my aspect of guidance. Again, there, there is another counterpart of mine that is attending University of Chicago Crime Lab, Mr. Alex DePaulo, who himself is doing the CBI part of that. And so I'm, I'm energized to see that there is a community member that is getting the other side of that particular training, and hopefully he can bring those ideas with the ideas that I learned from the same training and how that we build here within the city of Portsmouth. But again, anyone that has an idea, and I'll, I'll repeat it, so anybody that has an idea, I'm, I'm all ears on how we tackle our issues here in the city.
Thank you, sir. And I guess that's a question for our city manager. We're here to work with you, support you through our city manager, but if we could have a presentation through Mr. Alex DePaulo, I think that would help bring some more attention to some ideas that we could do as well.
Ma'am, if I, if I can, so right now, I'm, I'm working with Mr. Paula, Mr. DePaulo. There is a meeting that we're trying to set up right now for August the 15th. Which will be a stakeholders' meeting. That particular meeting will, will not only discuss some of the initiatives that we're talking about now, but some of the, the other grassroots conversations and how we bring this into a, a full ecosystem. So we'll definitely put that information out. Right now, we're trying to find a venue large enough to support us.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your presentation tonight, Chief. So I appreciate that you have been very patient with the city council. We decided nine months ago we were going to set this task force in motion. It's a complicated problem, it's a hard problem, but I think we've made getting the task force moving too hard. So I heard you say, I heard Councilman Tillage say, I heard the vice mayor say, we need a strategic plan. Last work session, I heard Cities United say, they help communities put together a comprehensive public safety plan. I heard Councilman Barnes say, and Councilman Tillage say, it is, it shouldn't be your job to figure out how the resources get prioritized to the various stakeholders that are going to help us. I heard Cities United say, the groups that they help, help to prioritize the resources to address the comprehensive, the elements of the comprehensive plan. I heard you say Portsmouth United needs to fit. I heard Cities United say, this comprehensive plan needs to address the violence interruption process that you've spoken to, but it also needs to address the systemic issues that lead to poverty, that are the root cause of, of, of crime in many cases. And that includes elements of what other members of the city staff working for the city manager are working on today in addition to you. But it also addresses what our grassroots organizations have to offer. It addresses what our churches and our schools and our civic leagues and our healthcare process and our, our housing, our PRHA folks, I mean, all of those elements are systemic contributors potentially to, to either continuing the problem or helping to solve the problem. And so, so, so what you're working on behind the scenes, we need to pull out from behind the scenes and get involved as an element of the tasking that we give to the task force. And I would suggest to my colleagues that the tasking that we give to this task force ought to be as simple as put together the comprehensive public safety plan for the city of Portsmouth. That's your charter. An element of that is help figure out how to prioritize the resources that we, the city council, put in place in the budget that the state provides via grants, that wherever the resources are going to come from, that, that we tell this task force, it's your job to take a look at the priorities from all of these elements, whether it's education, economic development, housing, healthcare, whatever the issues are, take a look at all those things, rack them and stack them, put them in priority, and let's put the resources, where the resources need to go, first, second, third, and fourth. Think it's as simple as that, and we're making it too darn hard. And whether we hire Cities United or somebody like Cities United, I don't frankly care, but I'm happy to hire Cities United because based on their presentation, they at least have a track record of helping communities like ours to build a tailored, comprehensive public safety plan for the situation that we find ourselves in, in this, this issue with crime. And so I, I guess I would suggest to my colleagues that, that, I don't know if we need a consensus, but it ought to be as simple as agreeing that the charter to this group is put together the comprehensive public safety plan in collaboration with the city manager, in collaboration with all of these other stakeholders, and help us figure out how to prioritize the resources that we need to apply. And then as a collective group, I think we ought to offer them help. I mean, you got help because you went to Chicago and got training, critical to, to your knowledge of, of the things to go work on. I think we ought to invite somebody like Cities United to be the, the whisperer in the ear of this task force to help them put together the integrated plan that we need so desperately, because they've got the track record to help other communities to do that.
Thank you, sir. And so one of the things after Cities United presented to us, I did have a brief conversation with the manager, and I, I kind of liked the idea, I don't know if each of you liked the idea, but I liked the idea of the comprehensive strategic plan that was delivered to us by Cities United. My, my question was, could we work collaboratively together to get that comprehensive strategic plan in place, and then perhaps they step back and then let the newly hired person that is going to be hired, the coordinator, to get everybody at the table on a consistent basis? One of the things we talked about, the manager and I, we wanted to hear what the chief had to say today. So it's not premature, but it's, it's in keeping with, we want to make sure to the best of our ability that we get this as right as we can possibly get it. So having the chief come here today solidified my point of view and my belief that we need someone who has the experience of putting a strategic plan in place to guide us with that. Why? Because it's going to cut down on time, and it's going to make us more efficient in doing that. That's just my process, and I just heard you say that. Is, is that fair? So I, I, I am in full agreement, if my colleagues on council are in agreement with bringing that particular entity in to help us to set up the strategic plan, and then at whatever point we determine the handoff is complete with the committee, then we move forward. That makes sense, but once again, it's all up to us. I agree with that approach, and I'm, I'm willing to ask that we move with that approach with all deliberate speed, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, so I guess I'm looking for maybe two items of consensus from my colleagues. The first is that we charter the task force to put together the comprehensive public safety plan for the city of Portsmouth. That includes the city manager and his team, plus all of the other stakeholders that, that Cities United listed for us. And then secondly, that we hire Cities United as a consulting group to the task force to assist them in ensuring that that comprehensive plan has the elements that we need to be not just reactive, but, but, but proactive as well.
Well, thank you, sir, for that, that clarity, and based on your request, we have the consensus call on the floor. And all, all we need to show, hold on, sir.
It was regarding this.
Excuse me?
It was regarding this.
Okay. I, I'll finish, and then you'll have the floor, okay? So go, go, go ahead and, and say what you're saying regarding, then we'll finish the call for the consensus, okay?
So for me, one of the things I, I think I've been consistent about is when we're doing things like this, to make sure that we look into our city first before we do anything else. As far as a comprehensive plan, I don't think that's what the commission should be chartered to do, not for a comprehensive plan. I think a comprehensive plan needs to come from the city manager's office with the collaboration of the police department, that commission, the city council, I mean, because again, ultimately we, the comprehensive plan needs to include our grassroots, I mean, our, our root causes, our root issues. And, and that won't just come, that won't be able to come from them, and they won't be able to just come from the police department, has to include... It has to include policy as well that we need to put together to make sure that we have things set in place for our citizens. But I'm not comfortable with moving forward with Cities United to address, to come in and to organize something when we have Portsmouth organizations who, one, already have a structure in the city, who also have relationships and who also have the organizing ability to put this together and to help us put this together. But also, we're hiring somebody, well, the police department is hiring somebody ultimately to do that job in which you're bringing in an organization who has no knowledge of, because just because you have knowledge in another city don't mean you have knowledge in the city of Portsmouth. And you're bringing in an organization to structure something for the city of Portsmouth in which they know nothing about. Just because a community looks like something doesn't mean it is that twin of it. So I want to caution us before we move forward into doing something like that without first us coming together to contribute to this comprehensive plan as a whole body, including all of the stakeholders, because the council is stakeholders too. It just seems like a lot of times we are rushing to put, and that goes back to putting the pressure onto one group of people, because we're putting a lot of pressure on you. Now it sounds like we're starting to put a lot of, we just want to put a lot of pressure on this commission to come up with something, and they take all the blame if it doesn't go well. So I think we need to pause that part of it and sit together and really, because right now we're about to make a, we're about to get a, ask for consensus off a knee jerk reaction and task them already without actually talking to each other of what we want to task, what we should really be tasking them for. And also, we want to ask for consensus and move forward with hiring somebody or whatever the case may be, without actually, one, opening it up, the process to people, because that goes back, what we're saying. We don't want to be responsible for hiring somebody right now without opening up the process to people. One, to our citizens, our organizations who are capable and who have the relationships and know what the issue is in this Portsmouth. Because we're asking somebody to come outside of the city of Portsmouth that don't know what the issues are and what the reasons are, why people do what they do. They don't have the relationships. We're asking them on this particular, because this issue is very delicate. And when you are from Portsmouth and you grew up in Portsmouth, on this particular issue, outsiders ain't the best option when it comes to addressing these, this right here. So I just want to ask us that we be real cautious, especially before we take a consensus to go, because that's kind of quick. We went from zero to 100 real quick.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilman Hugel's point, I just want to read section 2-849 of the resolution that we passed in October for the Crime Commission. The general powers and duties that we agree to is basically verbatim of what Councilman Hugel is asking for today. Is the Crime and Gun Violence Prevention Commission shall act as the advisory group to the city government and city council on the development and implementation of comprehensive actions, items that collaboratively address the need to reduce crime and gun violence in the city. The commission shall aid in forging community partnerships to assist in the reduction of crime and violence. That's what council voted on in October of 2023. And so I'm comfortable moving forward with Councilman Hugel's ask for consensus in regards to bringing this to chartering, because that's what we gave them the power to do in October. As far as the group to come in to help to lead it, I think, you know, I agree with Councilman Barnes's point. I also agree that strategy is the key here. And Citizens United is a strategy group that can work with partner groups that do know the area. And so I am comfortable moving forward with the ask of Councilman Hugel.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say the same. I concur with Hugel's, Councilman Hugel's request because that's what we put the commission in place to do. And then I know that Portsmouth United will be a group that will be hired, and I don't believe that they would just take the information and run with it. I think they would collaboratively work with council to get input on that as well. But one question was, is Mr. Alex DePaula a person who can offer some insight on this as well? Or are they two separate entities?
So I think everybody has a part to play in this so far as what that actually looks like. I think, just from my standpoint, I think it would be a good opportunity for a larger meeting to figure out exactly what roles individuals will play. And again, Cities United could be a consultant in that aspect to figure out where we are. There are some things we're probably ahead of the curve on. There are some things we have yet to maybe analyze. Again, it really is about building the ecosystem and understanding everybody's role within that ecosystem. So, you know, everybody said valid points. Councilman Barnes was valid. Outsiders are going to have a tough time with implementation of things. So from my standpoint, and again, I'll just lend my opinion since I was asked, I think consultant role may be the best part at their immediate action. And then we analyze and see what else is needed therefore afterwards.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that clarity, and I concur that we move forward with the group Cities United to help collaborate this whole process.
City Manager Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I've listened to the conversation that we've had today. And as we decide what we're going to do with this, I think one of the most important things we have to decide is what this board wants. I think we're kind of dancing around and allowing somebody else to lead the dance. Citizens of Portsmouth is actually looking for us to lead the dance. Not let somebody else lead and we just follow. That's why we're all sitting where we're sitting today, because they want us to lead the dance. The task force that has been organized, let's move forward with the task force. I agree with Councilman Hugel that we need to give that group some charge, and we need to start moving it forward. If we're not going to move it forward, let's dissolve. But if this board has said we're going to move it forward, then let's move it forward. Now, the problem we're going to have with Cities United is, I don't know that our purchasing process will allow us to just unilaterally say, hey, I like these guys, let's give them a couple hundred thousand dollar contract. We can't do that as a body, right? So we can do an RFP, they can participate in an RFP process, but we can't just, you know, unilaterally decide, hey, these guys came and did a presentation, so we're going to give them the contract. Unfortunately, we're going to violate our own rules if we do something like that. Now, they can, they can end up with the contract, but we can't do it the way we're talking about today. So I'm going to ask you guys, if you do a consensus, do a consensus on what we're going to do with the task force, but let's lay off of trying to award a contract and act. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Carter, and I think that that was very wise information to provide. So we have two things to provide a consensus for. The number one thing is to move forward a consensus, to charter the commission with the duties that were inscribed in what we set forth in October. So that's the first call for consensus. So if I could see a show of hands agreeing to that, go ahead, sir. Consensus to charter the commission.
To charter the commission?
To.
Not to create the comprehensive crime plan?
No.
Because that was what, that was what he asked.
Well, that wasn't what was being asked. What it was, it was a commission, it was a consensus to charter the.
I thought we already did that anyway, though, right?
Charter the commission with what was outlined in the discussion so that we can move forward.
When we voted to, I think we did that already. That's part of it. Am I wrong? Like when we put it together, that's what we did?
The request for consensus, what was the request for consensus again, sir?
His was to create the comprehensive.
To charter the task force to create the comprehensive public safety plan for the city of Portsmouth.
Okay, that's what the consensus is. So I need a show of hands to create that. Do we have a show of hands? Very good. Now, to Mr. Carter's point, I heard what you said, sir, and I think that's prudent. Based on what we had in terms of the presentation, through our discussion, it was determined that I think the council did appreciate the information that was provided by Cities United. So it would be the request as a consensus to proceed forward, was certainly giving Cities United an opportunity to compete for the opportunity to provide the services in order to help us, in order to help us to set forth a strategic comprehensive plan.
We don't need a consensus for that.
Sure we do, because what we're going to be doing forward is.
We ask for consensus for every organization that wanted to do this.
Sir, sir, what we're asking for is for the record, so that we can put that on the record, that we're opening up for a process where anyone who is interested in applying, because that will require an expense from the city in order to secure that. So that's what we're doing. We're not giving direction to anything to actually hire anyone. It's a direction for the process to continue through the RFP. That is what the consensus requirement is asking for.
Okay.
Ma'am, you have the floor.
Just to comment a little bit on this point, I wanted to see, so do, we're, he's saying, from my understanding, he's saying we're asking for consensus to open up the RFP to them? To them or to everybody else? We're asking for consensus, is that something that we normally do out in the public?
No, but I think to clarify, we should probably ask the person who made the consensus to repeat the consensus, and then from there, determine if that consensus is sufficient for council to move forward.
Okay, so based on the feedback from the city manager, I'll modify the request for consensus to initiate an RFP to hire a consultant to assist the task force in developing the comprehensive public safety plan for the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, did you want the floor on that?
Well, I think combined with the RFP, you would need a RFQ. You would want to make sure that the qualifications are there. Anybody can respond to RFP, but if it doesn't include their qualifications, I think we're doing the public injustice.
Mr. Carter, would you like to address that question, sir?
I can definitely do so. In the RFP process, qualification is going to be one of the things that's evaluated.
It needs to state that in the offering, though.
Oh, absolutely. Every RFP should have a full section of qualifications.
Madam, would you like to have the floor? Okay, thank you very much. With that in mind, we just need a show of hands, who are in agreement with that particular request? Thank you. That concludes the presentation of Portsmouth United. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you and your team for all you do. We now come to council liaison reports, or the new reports by my colleagues on council. Seeing none, this work session is adjourned. We'll take a five-minute recess. We will restart at 7:10.